You win, one all out, alright?
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
What, is that pink?
Yeah, it's blinding.
Just wasn't sure.
Okay, very good. Alright, thank you.
Maybe, maybe, I didn't say anything at the beginning.
I will, yeah, when I...
More time to sink in.
Welcome to the Monday night Fairhaven Board of Selectmen meeting, October 17, 2016. The first order of business is if we could please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of changes to the agenda.
Oh, I just have to read the taping announcement?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I dumped the gun.
This meeting is being broadcast and taped by the Government Access Channel. Any member of the public also has the right to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this public meeting. A member of the public who wishes to record this meeting must first notify the Chair and must fully comply with any reasonable requirements so as to not interfere with the meeting. The Chair is required to inform other attendees of any such recording at the beginning of this meeting, and we are also audio taping this for our meeting. And just, I'm gonna hand it over to you for some changes, and just before everyone, before we begin, each person around the table is wearing pink, since it was our last meeting in October for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so that's why we all decided to wear pink. And Selectmen Freitas is the winner, he's got the most pink.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for doing that.
Thanks.
And thank you for Selectmen Esmondola for reminding us.
That's two changes on the agenda, one, under minutes, the approval of the release of redacted executive session minutes, could we move that from the agenda? And under executive session, collective bargaining updates, if we could remove that from the agenda?
Okay. Okay, so the first order of business then is the approval of the minutes of October 3, 2016, meeting in open session. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, abstain.
And one abstain, motion is made, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so two for, one abstain. Next we have the approval of the minutes for the October 3, 2016, meeting executive session. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, abstain.
Motion's been made, I'll second that motion. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, with one abstention, motion passes. And we're glad that you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, our town administration support.
Yes, as previously reported to the Board, Moody's Investment Service has removed its negative outlook from our bond rating. Removing the rating, the Moody's cited the structurally balanced fiscal year '17 budget and the Board's adoption of comprehensive financial policies as major reasons why they could remove it. Wendy, Ann, and retired Secretary, Executive Secretary Jeff Olusak, all played a pivotal role in laying the groundwork for this, so I want to thank them as well for their efforts. The Fire Chief Tim Francis, through his contacts with the state, was able to acquire for the Board of Public Works a well-maintained forklift, which they had never had previously and will help them significantly in their ability to move equipment around the yard. On October 5, Bill Roth and I met with Representatives Kirk and Company, the consultant we hired to look at the Rogers School. They asked for all the data and information that we have. We expect that they'll come back to us now with a meeting, their first kickoff meeting with the public for that information. Selectmen Esmondola and I met this week with our new Comcast representative, he'll be meeting with the Cable Advisory Committee in the near future, get acquainted with them as well. Speaking of that, there's two finalists for the cable coordinator position, and I'll be interviewing them tomorrow, Ann and I, and hopefully we'll get a finalist for that. And also, we were able to bring on board Lori Wilzek, resident of Fairhaven, to be our Assistant Animal Control Officer. Interviewed her and was very impressed with her knowledge of animal control issues, and she seems a very dedicated person. She's currently actually in charge of, volunteer in charge of the volunteers at the shelter. Last week, on October 13, I met with members of the Capital Planning Committee and major department heads where we reviewed changes that I'll be making in the capital planning process. I shared with you, in the weekly report, the rationales that we'll be using in prioritizing the projects, and so that was very well received by everybody at the meeting. Also last week, along with Selectmen Murphy and Esmondola, we attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new Planet Fitness facility, which was very impressive. And also last Friday, Fairhaven hosted in the Town Hall Auditorium a regional legislative breakfast sponsored by the Mass Municipal Association, and that was very informative. Chairman Murphy offered a welcoming remarks, as well attended by local officials throughout the region. And the last thing is we received a letter today from the EPA saying, giving us a test results for PCBs off of Oxford Street, and I'm happy to report that they came in well below the acceptable limits for that area. Bill Roth has been working with EPA on this, and we will be sending this information to neighbors as well as posting it on the town's website.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Any comments?
No, thanks, good update, thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we're gonna go right into our C action. Consider awarding Engineering Design Services contract with CDBG 16 to CG...
GCG.
GCG Associates.
Yes, we've done the bidding and procurement, the block grant program, we've, were awarded money for design, $60,000 plus, we're also doing the Oxford Terrace Parking Lot, or the Housing Authority will be doing that. We bid out, GCG Associates was the most advantageous proposal. They've been our CDBG engineer for about the last eight, nine years. They have the most experience with the CDBG and the criteria that we listed. I'm recommending to sign the contract, and this has got to be signed by the Selectmen, so...
Okay, is there a motion?
All three. All three?
All three, and the contract's for $60,000.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to sign the contract documents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And there are three, and a boot.
Yeah, I got a blue pen. Way ahead of you.
Okay.
Except for the date.
I got a blue pen.
I got, I got one.
You've trained them well.
I saw this and I said, I ain't getting in trouble with Bill. Bring in a blue pen.
Next we have to sign the warrant for the November 8, 2016 state election. So that'll be on Tuesday, the 8th day of November, 2016, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of the state election for the candidates that are running for the office of President, Vice President, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, Sheriff, District Attorney, County Commissioners, and four ballot questions. The precinct one will be at Town Hall, here at 40 Centon Street. Precinct two is at Hastings Middle School, Ash Street entrance. Precinct three is Hastings Middle School, Ash Street entrance. Precinct four is the fire station meeting room, 146 Washington Street. Precinct five is the recreational center at 227 Hudson Avenue, and precinct six is the recreational center at 227 Hudson Avenue. If you have any questions on which precinct you're in, please call our town clerk's office, and they will let you know.
And this is the first year, Mr. Chairman, that you can vote early, not even absentee voting, but you can talk to the town clerk, you know, about voting early.
How, how early is that?
It's on our website. Is it October 24? It's on our website, the information's on our website.
Okay. And as well, the procedure for absentee voting, is that on there? Because someone was asking me the other day, and I meant to...
I can look into it.
Okay, okay.
So we'll have that posted. So is there a motion to sign the warrant for the November 8, 2016 state?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So while we're signing those documents, we can go right into declaring two police vehicles surplus, both are 2009 Crown Victorias. The Fairhaven Police Department intends to declare the following vehicles as surplus equipment, one 2009 Ford Crown Victoria, and one 2009 Ford Crown Victoria. The effective date for this designation will take effect no later than November 30, 2016. Thank you, signed by Michael Myers, Chief of Police. Selectmen Esmondola, is there a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion to declare the two aforementioned vehicles as surplus.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, next we have used car site plan approved for JR's Auto Shop.
Yes, this plan has been submitted and reviewed by William Roth and Wayne Foster, and they are recommending approval as submitted.
Selectmen Esmondola? I think it's all set, and I'm glad to see the work that's been done on it, and I'd like to make a motion to approve, approve the license as noted.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next we have the used car site plan approval for Manny's Service.
Similar to the previous one, this has been reviewed by Planning Director William Roth and Building Zoning Enforcement Officer Wayne Foster with the recommendation for approval as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license as noted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna go right down to discussion, E1, Used Car Repair Site Plan Review.
Yes, included in your package is a memorandum prepared by Attorney Director William Roth and Building Commissioner Wayne Foster. I'll go over these in terms of what things currently stand, and then I have additional information in regards to the assault license. So in terms of Alden Buick, they are working on the draft plan, and they expect to have it done by the end of October. My recommendation is to grant an extension until November 3. Auto Diagnostic, they have not been responsive to staff's requests to work with us on this issue. Our recommendation is to bring them before you for a non-compliance revocation hearing at your next meeting. Triple R Auto Sales, we met with the owner of that business at your last meeting, we're scheduling a site visit out there to get everybody together in terms of what we are looking for in their site plan, so that should be done in the near future. Ray's Repair, the owner there had injured his shoulder, has not been able to work full-time, therefore not been able to generate sufficient funds to pay for the engineer. I'm recommending that we grant an extension until November 3 for that. Sarkis Enterprises, again, they anticipate submitting their plan by October 27, make a recommendation to extend to November 3. And Fairhaven Getty, they said that they can get their plan in by November 14, and so I'm recommending an extension until November 15 on that. In regards to the Spring Street Garage, I have some more information to explain what's going on with this. So what we have here is two sets, or two plans that have been brought forward. Let me go over the differences between those two plans. Plan A is, reflects licenses for both the used car license and repair licenses, for a total of 28 cars. This reflects the number of cars that were in your licenses that were approved for 2016, with six cars for the used car dealer's license, and then 15 cars and seven cars for the repair towing motor vehicles. And we've also added, as is customary with these type of licenses, three customer spaces and three employee spaces in the rear of the building. Those reflect the license numbers that were, I mean, most of it, to 2016. Plan B reflects the licenses as they existed prior to 2016, and they have a total of 34 spaces associated with them, ah, sorry, 38 spaces associated with them, and maybe a label a little bit different from what's on the license and the plan, but the total number is 38. The license holder is of the opinion, and obviously they can speak for themselves, that the 38 license, 38 space site plan is the one they'd like to get approved. Plan A is the one that reflects the most recent Selectmen's decision, plus those additional six spaces, and it's my recommendation that that be the one that you approve.
Okay. Selectmen Esmondola?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight for this discussion. I'm Carol Dussault, co-owner of Spring Street Garage, Dussault Auto Sales. This is my daughter Nicole Dussault, also with a beneficial interest. And if I may, what we have here is, well, I'll call it a misinterpretation, but it is an error in that for 40, excuse me, for 40 years, we have had a 32 car on our repair license. Additionally, of course, we have the used car license, the Class II, which is six cars, which is in addition, because it came after the 32 car repair license. So in total on the property, it is 38 cars. This past year, there's been a lot of, there was a lot of confusion, and frankly, I'll be so blunt as to say that we were singled out and targeted aggressively and inappropriately by a former Selectman, who, thank God, is no longer here. And that being said, there were numerous, numerous incidences of aggression and bullying and...
It was discriminatory, is what it was.
Yes.
To say it just how it is, it was discriminatory. I'm sitting here listening to all of the extensions given for not being able to pay, we were closed.
We've been closed.
For ridiculous reasons.
But...
For months, and we had to pay for a site plan, trying to make an income, pay a mortgage. We were closed for three months, for unfair reasons.
On the agenda for our license renewal.
This is the first year we're having an issue with the car count on our license. This is an administrative error.
But Nicole, you're right. But what I, what I want to explain here, and I believe in all sincerity, despite what happened in the past, you know, we're still standing, and we're Fairhaven strong, and we'll continue to stand, but what we have here is, there was a, he wanted that we not repair cars in the front of our property. That's how this all came about. Yeah, there are loads of other things to talk about, but that's not for tonight's meeting. Tonight we're talking about a site plan that I was in compliance in having it done before most anybody else. I did have it submitted by, I believe it was May 1, John Romanelli, civil engineer, very nice gentleman, very knowledgeable, and I couldn't understand why it wasn't getting approved. There were minor revisions, like icons of cars, put a traffic flow, although we don't have a traffic flow on our property, we have no abutting streets, so I had the guy put arrows going to the back of our property, although people wouldn't go to our impound yard. We are on Spring Street, we have a 135-foot curb cut, but here was the misinterpretation. Because of the insistence, as a condition, one of several numerous restrictive conditions, number one, was that no cars be repaired or dismantled, condition one, in front of the property. In no way did that mean that no one could park there. So for 40 years, this is what I have had, 15 in the rear, seven in the interior, and 10 in the front. But I lost somehow those 10 in the interpretation that you can't repair in the front or dismantle, and I agree. Although I did know that there are occasions, we buy cars at the auction, they get towed in, and it needs a wheel put on, I can't roll it, or strut, or something, or a customer has a car brought in, and so minor repairs, I would call those minimal, we're not talking about, you know, taking an engine out here, and, and that's where my 10 cars got lost. When I got, I asked for the minutes, I just couldn't believe what the disconnect was, and then I realized what it was. I looked back at all my old, my previous licenses, which all always clearly stated, 15 rear, and, and this information is, of course, you issue the licenses, that's readily available to you, 15 rear, seven interior, 10 front, and that's in addition, that's separate from the six Class II license. And I finally realized that it hadn't been written on the front of my license, but this last year and this year, with this individual, a little stressful to say the least, and when I gave my licenses to John Romanelli, I said, geech, you know, at the time, I didn't think of it, I said, but there's 10 in the front. When he did his surveillance, and I've heard this before, he said, now that the place is so clean, and the back now is all mown and such, looks really nice, and we're proud of that, and we're gonna keep it that way, he said, are you aware that based on your land mass, if they go by one formula, you should, you're entitled to double the cars? I said, I am aware of that, I've been aware of that for years, but I'm not seeking that. A simple, please, we, go by my place, there's like not much there, and that's fine, you know, we're semi-retired. And so the long and short of it is because of the conditions saying no repairs of vehicles in the front of the property, I have no vehicles allowed in front of the property. That means that when I go to pick up my mail, I'm parked illegally according to that. So it really is an error that can be easily remedied, and, and yes, the total cars, six plus 32, because right now, my license isn't allowing for even one car in the front, and it was that interpretation from whomever, it's an administrative, I would say...
It's certainly an error.
It's an error.
For 40 years, that has been the amount, and last year, considering...
Well, this year's 2016, yeah, and, and so no...
Okay, who was sitting on the, we've never had to deal with an issue of all of a sudden losing a significant amount of spaces.
Well, the fact that you can't park in front is...
It's a setup, really, is how it feels, because we have things towed in all the time.
I'm out of business.
At 1 o'clock in the morning, they drop it there, by 8, 9, we know it's there, we can move it in, but this has never been an issue in 40 years.
And in the minutes, there is nothing to reflect that we were shorted, oh hey, let's take a vote that we're going to reduce that cars.
Exactly.
And this has been my, my big frustration, trying to explain this, although, you know, and I want to say to the public and to other repair businesses, yes, has this been an annoyance, having to get a site plan, but I want to share with you that I am in full support of it for a number of reasons. From a planning, we've got our chairman there, graduated from high school with him, can't resist, hi Wayne, Wayne Haywood, from a planning perspective, this is, this is a very good idea for all businesses, to have site plans, but I also appreciate and recognize it from a public safety perspective. Before I spent money, that I didn't have, on a civil engineer, an elder in town who will remain nameless, but he called me and said, Carol, go to the fire department, because they took the initiative many years ago to do site plans on their own, I don't know if anybody knows that, with limited resources, and they did that from a safety perspective. If they have to answer to a fire, they need to know how many structures are on that property. They need to know the traffic flow, if there's an egress that might be a remote one, a little dirt road, whatever, to save lives. So I did call our fire department to try to save money, just being honest, hoping that they did a site plan on us, and they said, no, they have several, but they did say that they had started that for a safety purpose, but let's be honest, they hadn't gotten around to us because we're so, they said, we didn't, because you're so wide open, it's pretty clear, you have, you're just on Spring Street. That's it. And they told me, so they didn't have one, and that they couldn't continue with it, let's be honest, their resources are so stretched. Same for our police department, these site plans enable them, if someone is hiding in a shed, or, I mean, this could mean the difference between life and death. So I am not sitting here trying to fight the site plan. I got mine in, in May, through a civil engineer, and I spoke with Wayne Foster and with Bill, and they both told me that John Romanelli, the site plan was excellent, that, you know, the little shrubs, everything, everything. The only issue was to the number of cars that, the way this was interpreted on our license this year, was that we can't have any cars in the front, but that if the Selectmen remedied that error, that they would recommend our site plan, and, and, and that's that. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. Selectmen Esmondola?
If I could just clarify a couple of things before this, there are, under Plan A, there are cars that are allowed to be parked in the front, there are the six cars that are part of the used car dealership, and then there are four other spaces... And then there are four other spaces for customer parking. So the vehicles that are being stored for repair are in the actual structure.
That was gonna be my, my question was the definition of front, because I forget that this, there are two here that are kind of on the side front. Clearly have three that are in the front, and then these other four are kind of in that side front. So are all those, that would be nine.
See, the difference between the two plans is that it's the amount of cars.
And the placement.
You can see in the back where we're allowed more cars, there's some missing here. But still, the front could fit more based on what our license has stated for the past forty years.
But if I could just, the question I have is, because you, you said fifteen in the rear, seven interior, and ten in front. So the ten in front is what I think was in question. And I'm just trying to understand the count, because it looks to me like there are nine in front, by the way, this is not... So it looks like we're, this is only off by one, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, but it would be ten in front, now that's separate from the used car license. The six for the used cars fits, fit perfectly on the east side, one, two, three, four, five, six. But then you have the front of the garage and the west side. That should be ten cars, or could be ten cars. And I also understand, I'm not looking for additional cars for customers and potential employees. I understand that customers, customers and employees would be part of that ten in the front. It's not, I'm not looking for additional. I'm saying, out of those ten that are allowed in the front, some could be for employees, some could be for customers. I get a spot, she gets a spot, whatever.
I would hold.
But it's just that that ten car in the front got lost. How we place them, well, you know.
Can I, let me just ask this question. By meaning ten cars, you mean ten cars for sale and, you're talking, so it'd be sixteen cars out front, at potential?
Because to add up to the thirty-eight, the six car license, used car sales, is separate from the thirty-two that has always been on the repair. And I've got so many licenses I brought with me to show you, they were always written out to show total cars on site, thirty, well, on the repair license, because then you've got the used car, which is six, and that's in its, in and of itself. It's a thirty-eight, but on the repair, it has always been. Total cars on site, thirty-two, seven inside, ten in front, fifteen in rear. And then it gets into the hours of operation from seven AM to night, it's always been that way. The ten cars in the front got lost, there's several, I just pulled, I, I... The ten got lost under the condition one, up to fifteen vehicles for repair will be allowed in the rear of the licensed premises at ninety-nine Spring Street at any one time. No vehicles for repair in front of the building. And then up to seven vehicles will be allowed in the interior. But the ten got lost in that whole no repairing of them. But that never meant to short them, or that you can't park there. And nowhere in the minutes does it say, hey, we're gonna reduce them ten. It truly is this number one condition that caused a misinterpretation. And I don't know what else to say.
No, thank you, I think you clearly explained it. Any questions?
No, I'm just gonna go back to, you know, when, when this was coming up, I know I was watching a lot of the selectman meetings, trying to keep up on things. And I can remember the discussion being more based on, you know, they didn't want the repairs happening out front. I don't, I don't recall anybody saying we're going to lessen the ability. They wanted the back, you guys wanted the back, well, as far, my recollection is, you wanted the back side cleaned up, which I have gone by there, and it does look like it's cleaned up. And we wanted this to get going so that we had, didn't have repairs going out in front of the, in front of the building. So how we got to not being able to park vehicles in there, I honestly, I don't recall that, but I was not sitting on the board at that time. I'm a common sense guy, that's just how I kinda look at things, how I wanna deal with things. And it, it says to me, right now, from my opinion is, you know, if they wanna have the cars in and not being repaired, you're gonna have people coming and going all day long, as far as it goes, as far, you know, people come in and people leaving. We don't wanna go backwards, we wanna go frontwards, we wanna get you guys, we wanna get you guys working up and, up and running. So that's my opinion right now, I'm gonna hear from the other two selectmen, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I certainly can understand and appreciate that. I'm curious to know why, you know, Mr. Reese, and I guess maybe Mr. Roth also are recommending Plan A, correct?
The reason is because that reflects the current counts on the actual licenses for two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, all right.
There's no different disagreement that previous licenses had a higher number of vehicles. But the current license, which is what we have to go by, has a lesser number. Although we did add six more spaces to allow for customer and employee parking above and beyond what the board of selectmen, so it's not a ten-car difference, it's actually it's a four-car difference between Plan A and Plan B.
And so I do understand and agree with, you know, with Selectinfratus on, on the intent. That's my recollection of the intent was, you know, we absolutely wanted to have the place cleaned up. That was, that was, you know, that, we talked long enough about that, and it was done. And there was an intention at the same time to try and clean up what was going on in the front by saying not to repair automobiles there. So now, if, if by granting Plan B, it says we also have to go back and change the license, you know, I mean, we've done that in some of the other ones, going the other direction too, right? So it's, I mean, I think it's important just to get them in sync and get this moving.
If the board were to choose Plan B, as part of the motion, you'd direct us to change the license to reflect what's on Plan B.
Right, and then that would be, doing so would put the license back to prior years, for continuity, consistency, I guess, so. That's, you know, my observation, and I think I would lean that way, just to get this.
And I do agree, I was on the board at the time, I think the intent was that no repair being done in the front. And I went to see your dad many times, step by step, when he got things removed and cleaned up, and...
The bookmobile!
But that was a quest that he didn't know about.
Last time it was here, I said that we would get on it, and that was a lot of work, but we pulled together, and he did that.
And Chairman Murphy, we had to pay them.
To take it away.
We thought that they'd pay us, but we had to pay them.
And we did that.
Well, I know, I know the residents at McGann Terrace are very pleased with the way the backyard looks. So, so I have no problem going back to Plan B.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It should be noted that both plans, you still don't, sixteen cars do not fit physically based on that site plan, because there's a huge right-of-way there on their property. Plan B still only has, in the front, three customer, six for-sale cars, and then basically everything else on their license is in the rear. I just wanted to clarify. And then all of the thirty-two repair cars, you know, the license will ultimately be reduced because, and, and there's an error in their Plan B, because they really should only have, they say four employee, but they really should say three employee and three customer. And then the rest is fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, like eighteen or nineteen in the rear.
You set the employee, if I may, I'm sorry, you had set the employee, and we don't have employees, but I understand that the plan has to reflect potential employees. But it doesn't have to be four and four, it can be three and two, it can be whatever. But there is sufficient mass to put on the west side, because I've done it for forty years, six cars in front of the trailer for sale, separate license, and then ten cars in the front and west side.
I just wanna reiterate that you need to look at the plan that your engineer gave you. If they approve Plan B, and the zoning enforcement officer goes out there, there's three customer, six for-sale cars, everything else, everything else on the plan that you submitted to us, everything else is in the, what I consider the rear of the building, the fence back. That is the plan that you submitted that's in your hand. So that's...
And that's the one that we're working towards.
That is the Plan B that you submitted, not me. That's the plan that you submitted.
No, I know it wasn't, you, you, you told me.
You went round and round with a lot of plans.
Well, you and I went round and round over the number of cars.
And that's a side of the issue.
And that's what we went, you and I...
You're right, it is.
It is a separate issue.
Our amount, the amount of cars that we have had for forty years.
Where their place is irrelevant.
So why don't we go with what the original license has stated?
And I can have John Romanelli amend it if we need.
Selectinfratus, though, I think what the, the plan has to reflect an actual layout that will actually show that. So therefore, you'd have to come back to us with another plan that actually showed how that would fit, and would have to, and count for all the right-of-ways and...
And certainly can do that, but it, it does keep being denied due to the fact that it does not reflect what is on two thousand and sixteen's license. It's, it starts there with that error of the incorrect amount of cars. When we put in our site plan, they're looking at a license from two thousand and sixteen that doesn't reflect the actual number that we have had for years.
If we have our number restored, I will be, I, it was my understanding that John Romanelli told me that he had spoken with you in that if it wasn't the discrepancy on the number of cars, that you were fine with his plan, but I can have him amended.
To reflect what the license reflects.
Tell me if I'm wrong here, let me just speak, and then you tell me if I'm wrong here. What, what this plan needs to show is the four cars on the side, two cars on the other side, and ten out front.
Ten won't physically fit, I, I've reviewed the site plan for months.
There were nine here right now in front.
But, but I will let you know.
It can certainly fit one more to reflect the ten.
Oh, the one more can go in the back?
But six of the ten cars in the front are the for-sale cars.
See, this is the question I asked before, I'm asking, I'll ask it one more time again, okay? This is what I'm gonna ask. You have six spaces plus another four, so you're looking for ten cars out front or six spaces plus an additional ten?
The six in the, on the side, on the east side are the used car sales. The ten in the front and on the west side is part of the repair license reflecting thirty-two. Fifteen, seven, and ten is thirty-two.
This is what I'm looking at right now, and I think this is what, what Bill is getting at right now. Right now, this shows four spots here.
Yeah.
Okay.
For sale.
This, this shows, does that say?
It says four cars for sale.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, it does say, on both plans, this is four cars for sale. Four cars for sale here, two cars for sale here, that's six. And then it's showing, actually, right now it shows three, but we just said the fourth would just need a line. What you're saying is you'd like this to be ten. Yes, no, maybe so?
Yes, I, I, I question the two cars for sale by themselves like that, because that's not how I saw the plan from Romanelli, this is different.
This is it.
This is different.
Right, so, all right, so let me ask you this, are you trying to do four, four and eight out front? Maybe that, because the plan does show just two cars here, that's what, and I think this is why we're having the plan done.
And that's wrong.
Mr. Chairman, if the intent is to allow the number of cars that was on the pre-existing licenses without having cars being repaired out front, why don't you allow staff and I to work with the license holder and come back with a plan that meets those, those criteria?
I think we're close, I think we're right there.
May I clarify one thing before we leave in front of the deuce halls? The thirty-two repair cars, of the thirty-two repair cars, three need to be customer and three need to be employee. So therefore, the revised license would say six for sale, three customer, three employee, and then it would be thirty-two minus six, so it would be twenty-six repair cars. So their repair license will be for twenty-six, then there will be three customer, three employee, and six for-sale cars. I just wanna clarify that for the repair. And I've included that, ma'am.
Okay, so the thirty-two.
The thirty-two, of the thirty-two repair cars, six of those, three of those are for customers, and three are for employees. So your license should be very detailed, and it should say, it should reflect the thirty-two, it should say twenty-six repair cars, three employee, three customer, that's a total of thirty-two, and six for-sale cars. So their repair license will actually be for twenty-six vehicles, because there's...
Now, but the repair license, consistent with other licenses, will itemize the number that are repair slots, the number that are customer slots, and the number that are employee slots.
That's what she, that's what we agree.
As long as the license, it, both of the licenses...
Total thirty-eight.
That's what he's saying.
That's what he's saying.
And we can pull it pointed out.
Exactly what you're saying.
But sometimes customers are dropping off cars to be repaired, Miss Bill, you know what I mean? So there's a little, as long as my repair license...
There's a gray area there, so...
There is a gray...
However, we want...
We don't assign, we don't say this is...
Exactly, there's not designated signs there.
We allocate base, the count is based on what we think can fit in the site.
Let's, let's reflect, the, the line should reflect the spaces that we needed.
Yes.
This way, we can approve the planning and get you guys back to work.
Yep, please.
Now I know the number, that's easy.
Well, the repair was incorrect. Nobody would expect you to know that unless you looked up.
And that's why we kept having a disconnect, and I couldn't understand him, and he couldn't understand me. And Wayne remembered, Wayne said, yes, you have always had a thirty-two.